At this time, we'll call the order the City of Schmoken Council meeting, January 8, 2024. Please rise to the pitch and the flag, remain standing for a moment aside with prayer. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as a representative for which stands my nation, our God, and his people, with every justice and solemn.
Charlie, let me drop it.
Amen. Okay, we're placing the interview roll call.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Lashinsky?
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Here.
Councilwoman Duganis?
Here.
Councilwoman Moyer?
Here.
And Mayor Albrecht?
Here.
Our president, the candidate for?
Okay, at this time, do we have any presentation? Okay, at this time, Officer Ethan Rovin, would you please come up here? And if you'd like your mom and dad and family to come up, they're more than welcome.
Just keep going. Go ahead, just keep going.
Uh, it is an honor to do this, correct? I mean, Ethan. Okay, are you ready? Please place your left hand on the microphone, raise your right hand. Repeat that for me. I, Ethan Rovin.
I, Ethan Rovin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
A patrolman with fidelity.
Of patrolman with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Okay, we're going to move forward with the meeting. At this time, uh, let the record show that Schmoken City Council, uh, on January 3rd, 2024, uh, for approximately 25 minutes met in executive session, uh, to discuss personnel matters. Also, on that day, for approximately 15, 20 minutes, for informational purposes, members of City Council, uh, were privy to, uh, discussing the role subject, uh, with an official from Longway City. So with that said there, you can proceed.
All right, do we have any other knowledge?
No, sir.
Okay, do we have any bids?
No, sir.
Correspondence?
No, sir.
Citizens' comments contingent upon business listed on the agenda. All right, amendments. I request the motion to accept the amendments of the City of Schmoken Council meeting on December 11, 2023, regular council meeting.
So, please. Thank you. I'll second.
Any question? No question? Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lashinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Duganis?
Yes.
And Mayor Albrecht?
Yes.
And Russian Paris unanimously?
Okay, request the motion to accept the amendments of the City of Schmoken Council meeting on December 27, 2023, special meeting.
I'll move it.
Second.
Anything on the quick?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Lashinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duganis?
Yes.
And Mayor Albrecht?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously on that subject?
Okay, under bills, uh, there's a motion to approve bills for December 2023, but at this time, it will be tabled till January due to the personnel changes that have taken place recently. So we'll have it here for January. Okay. Or February. I'm still waiting for Christmas. All right. Thank you. Okay, directors' reports under accounts and finance. Do we have any?
Um, yeah, this is the treasurer's report, um, mayor, council, citizens. The total general fund balance, and this is as of January 1st, 2024, Total motor license balance, $158,021.86. Total library balance, $161,688.94. Total sinking fund number one balance, $146,502.6. Total sinking fund number two balance, recreation balance, excuse me, Total street lighting balance, $1,203.60. Total American Legion balance, $86.25. Total neighborhood mitigation fund balance, $2,834.54. Total code department credit card balance, $160.50. Total police department credit card balance, $290.1. For total balance in all accounts, respectfully submitted by Treasurer Brenda Scamble. Thank you, Brenda.
You're welcome.
That's, that's all I have right now.
Parks and public improvements.
I have nothing at this time, but I do have, uh, I just want to say a thank you to, uh, to, uh, Darrell Jackson, Joe Lashinsky, the mayor, Clay Cipri, associates, is that correct? For, uh, the wonderful, uh, New Year's Eve celebration down there. These guys helped out, uh, putting this together, um, and the police department and the street department. It was a wonderful time, no incidents, everybody had a great time, so, um, thank you.
Well, thank you. There's nothing else from me.
Michael, if we can just have a little light to name a company up in the Android Plaza. Uh, Magic, is it?
Okay. Magic, yeah.
Also, shout out to, uh, for their, uh, uh, temporary donation of that, uh...
Television.
Uh, he gets paid for doing that.
Yeah, okay.
So, and so does the, uh, DJ.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to, uh, recognize those, which are monsters, right?
Okay. Streets and public improvements.
Uh, the only thing I have is Kevin said the Christmas tree pickups are gonna end at the end of the year, at the end of this month. Contact City Hall, give your address, we will pick it up, put it up front. That's all I have.
Okay. Public sector, yes, okay. Code enforcement revenue, 57. Rental revenue was 250. Uh, rental registration was 250. Parking permits was $988.66. Other permits was $1,033. Dumpster permit was $200. Excavating permit was $833. For grand total, for $2,271.66. And then, uh, code enforcement activity, complaints addressed was 87. Notice, notice, a violation sent was 28. Citation written was 33. Land work inspection complete was four. Hosted unfit was one, fire call is three, warning is 26. And then for the fire calls, um, the month of December, we had service calls, was three. Um, fire alarm was... Hang on a second, talking about that. Service calls? Fire calls was 13. Fire alarm was six. Hazardous conditions was three. Rescue emergency was six. And severe weather was 31. For grand total for the year was $434. Working fires in December was two. Um, they have mutual aid was 13. Received mutual aid was four. For grand total for the year for that was 26. And a fire. All right, thank you. You're welcome. Um, Mr. Kinder?
Uh, looking good to see you, Mayor.
Okay, Mrs. Camp?
No, I have nothing else.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Will you believe I've been, if I said I have nothing?
Oh. Thank you.
I'll make it quick. Welcome, new county people. Yeah, so, um, what happens each month, I always hand out a little this what's happening in the world of revitalization, so that's what I made it out before the meeting. Uh, just a couple of quick highlights from there. Uh, downtown manager, we did advertise, we would be in advertising for that. That will go on till the 18th of January. Uh, each department should send their resume to me either by email or they could drop it off here at City Hall or they can mail it to City Hall. Um, so very excited about that. We do have a group of people who are evaluating the resumes. Councilwoman Moyer, uh, Mr. Slavy, myself, and then from the EDA group, we have Pat Mack and Andy Twager. Um, so that's the group that's going to be evaluating the resumes. The top, um, who's for the top will then be invited in for, uh, in-person interviews. So, um, we're hoping to have somebody be wonderful by the end of January, beginning of February. So we're hopeful of getting somebody right away. Uh, also, we have not heard yet, but we did apply for $882,835 for a local share account, that's the gambling money. Local share account grant for, uh, the fire company, for a new fire pumper. Um, also, I'm working right now, we were successful with one of the 13 in the state to get a safe streets for all grants. Um, that is New York Department of Transportation. So what I'm working on right now is a request for proposal to get consultant in to help create a plan. And that is to create a plan to keep it safe in the community for, uh, driving, walking, to make it more walkable, incorporating the ATV. So that's a planning grant. Um, also, we were successful with getting a revolving loan fund for EPA brownfields. And what that will be, if somebody has environmental remediation that they have to do, you can get a loan, but half of that loan can be then forgivable. So as soon as I have applications for that, I will let you know. Uh, also, we're working on getting funding for your American Legion building. Um, so we're working with Senator Fetterman's office, Senator Mc, and Senator Casey's office. Uh, right now, the one that we're furthest with is with Senator Fetterman's office. Uh, they put in for $500,000. So far, it's sustained it and we're waiting for house. So that's the furthest one we have. And, um, also with the independent street downtown makeover, that's through Congressman Muser's office. Uh, I know that the city's been working with PennDOT for all the paperwork that they need to actually get a consultant in. So that's moving forward. And then I also applied for a CFA multimodal grant for $2 million to add to that project. So as soon as I hear about that, I'll let you know. Uh, we're, we were successful with our H&amp;H study. That was the hydrologic and hydraulic study to disprove what FEMA was trying to say that your flood plain is gonna quadruple in size. We were successful with that, so we actually were also successful with the appeal process. So what's happening right now is because it looks favorable for the city of Schmoken, it's also favorable for full township. So they got the benefit from these findings. So what's happening right now is, um, FEMA now has to let full township know and then they have a whole, like, appeal process, like, there's a whole process going on. So we're not looking for any changes for at least a year. But I did want to let you all know, we were successful with that, so that was very exciting. I think that's all the updates we have right now. And then we're working with police to get a grade for them as well. That's all I have.
All right, so thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question for the, down at the, I'm gonna go to the library.
Yes.
Now, the funding you're trying to secure, is that to repair the issues we have on the roof?
Okay.
Or is it the fire thing that we have to deal? Okay, okay, that's what I wanna find out.
All total, so what we did is we figured out how much we're gonna need for everything. And then we'd also love to put an elevator in there too. So I'm slapping that in there too. So, um, what we'll do is as we're getting funded, we will fix what's like the most, uh, urgent pressing things.
Cause I knew we had the fire, what was it?
Fire suppression.
Yeah, but you got it taken care of and we had the issues.
And the fire alarm and the crack. So we're looking at all of that. And all.
Um, the insurance companies might probably...
We've been talking about for about 15 years.
Yes, yes. And also, special thanks for Brenda. I mean, she's really stepping up with amen leaving to help out because we have a lot of grants and, um, other things that we're working on. So we'll work with Doreen and between the three of us, we'll keep everything on track. But many thanks for you, I know it's very frustrating, so thank you. That's all I have. Yes.
Exchange cycle?
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Uh, real quick, the AEDs are in, they're finalized. And with the help of Mr. Slavy and Mrs. Moyer, we came up with a list for distribution of them. Um, I was able to drop off the AED here at City Hall and within the next week, I'm gonna make up Kevin about founding them and the city properties, um, where they'll be going to. So again, thank you for your help, it was greatly appreciated. For December, uh, juvenile petitions were three, criminal complaints were 37, non-traffic citations were 18, traffic citations were 23, traffic warnings were one, parking tickets 10, parking citations 404, coat tickets 11, and for December, it was 1,374 calls and 3,485 miles. And for December, it was one thousand three hundred and seventy-four calls and three thousand four hundred and eighty-five miles that were logged. End of the, end of the year tallies for 2023. Thirty juvenile petitions, four hundred and eighteen criminal arrests, one hundred and five non-traffic citations, two hundred and sixty-one traffic citations, twenty-five traffic warnings, three thousand two hundred and fifty-nine parking tickets, eight hundred and nine parking citations, two thousand twelve sweeper tickets, one hundred and forty-seven code tickets. Um, total dispatch calls were seventeen thousand eight hundred and five calls and officers patrolled forty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-four miles for the year. Um, also with that, the holidays are over, uh, we began ticketing again in the city. And we then put it on, um, our website, let people know, and we're starting to ticket again. And, uh, he's been out doing that. Other than that, that's all.
Thank you. Okay, under new business. Request a motion to appoint Brenda Scandell, city treasurer, tax collector, actual delegate and city solicitor, attorney Edward Greco as the alternate for the Northumberland County TCC. So, oh, sir. Anything on the question?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Duganitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
And Mayor Olrich?
Yes.
Emotion carries unanimous.
Okay, request a motion to accept the 2024 schedule for workshop and public meetings as provided by the city administrators.
So.
Anything on the question?
Mrs. Lasinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duganitz?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Mayor Olrich?
Yes.
Emotion carries unanimous.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Okay, under boards and committees. Request a motion to approve the renewing Kevin Richardson's position on the Shamoken Cold Township joint sewer authority for an additional five years effective January twenty twenty-four.
Motion, Mr.?
I'll second.
Anything on the question?
Mr. Duganitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Olrich?
Yes.
Emotion carries unanimous.
Request a motion to appoint Dakota Shuck to the EDA for a five-year term effective January twenty twenty-four.
So.
I'll second.
Anything on the question?
Mrs. Lasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Duganitz?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
And Mayor Olrich?
Yes.
Emotion carries unanimous.
Okay, request a motion to appoint Joseph Lasinski Jr. to the Shamoken Housing Authority for a five-year term effective January twenty twenty-four.
Motion, Mr.?
I'll second.
Anything on the question?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Duganitz?
No.
Mrs. Moyer?
No.
And Mr. Mayor Olrich?
Yes.
The rates have it, three, two, two names.
Three, two. Okay, at this time, I'll turn it over to our solicitor. So here, right.
Thank you, ma'am. This would be the second reading of ordinance twenty-four dash one, which was previously, um, read at a prior council meeting. This has been duly advertised concerning the submitting of a question of a government study commission to the electors as drafted in the ordinance. The ordinance number two one, twenty-four dash one, an ordinance of the city of Shamoken, Northumberland County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the Northumberland County Board of Elections to submit to the electors of the city of Shamoken the question of electing a government study commission at the April twenty-three, twenty, two thousand twenty-four primary election. Whereas the governing body, the city of Shamoken, desires to submit a question to the city electors on whether to form a government study commission. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the city council. The city of Shamoken, Canada, Northumberland, Pennsylvania, as follows. Excuse me, section one, city council authorizes Northumberland County Board of Elections to place the following question before the electors of the city of Shamoken at the April twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four primary election. The question is quote, shall the government study commission of seven, seven members be elected to study the existing form of government of the municipality to consider the advisability of the adoption of a home rule charter? And if advisable to draft and to recommend a home rule charter. City council authorizes the municipal secretary to file a certified copy of this ordinance with the Northumberland County Board of Elections, together with the copied question to be submitted to the city's electors. Section three, if any section clause provision shall be held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect any other, uh, section clause provision, excuse me, portions of this ordinance, so long as it remains legally enforceable minus invalid portion. The city reserves a right to amend this ordinance or any portion thereof from time to time as it deemed advisable. This ordinance shall become effective as provided by the city council enacted this black day of two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, can I get a motion?
So, move, ma'am.
I second, second. Anything on the question?
Mr. Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Lasinski?
No.
Mr. Duganitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mayor Olrich?
Yes.
Emotion carries three days, two names.
Okay, at this time, open it up to citizens' comments.
Anything on, hold on a second. Ladies and gentlemen, anyone coming up to speak is required to sign that.
I already signed it.
No, I appreciate for everybody else in here. I just wanted to know where it was, Joe.
Oh, it's on the, on the value. Uh, Joe Lasinski, five eighteen East Pine Street. Thanks to Barry Conde and Rick for appointing me to board. Uh, one part of the question, can I ask why we got no votes? I know one was definite, but I'm a little unsure about the other. Mr. Duganitz, if, I mean, if you want to entertain, if not, you don't have to. But I understood you thanked me for helping out with the thing downtown. I was, you know, for New Year's, I was kind of confused on why the no vote. Okay. Also, um, I see, I hear Andy Twigger's involved with the selection of a downtown manager. I know he's made contact, there's still been no improvements with any of his buildings. He has three of the biggest dilapidated commercial businesses in town. Um, I mean, if we're gonna make a habit of, just my opinion, putting people like that, um, to make these kind of decisions around here, we might as well put guys like Public Enemy Number One on the, on these decision-making things. It's the same type of deal. Um, I was reached out today by housing authority workers after they saw the agenda, they were very welcoming. So they invited me down tomorrow to get started, get some information on some things, so hopefully it's, uh, good to go, but thank you guys for.
Joe, on Andy Twigger, we have met with him a couple of times, all right? Certain things, Andy, because of the nature of finance and that, wants to keep that quiet right now. But I can assure you, he is one hundred percent committed to fixing these buildings and everything. Even though with COVID, he got, you know, hit with that, that, uh, finances.
I know, I believe him, I believe him a hundred percent that he's committed to doing it.
But he's also told us he'll do whatever he has to.
I just want to see it happen. It's been, when me and you had the meeting with Kirk Moser a couple of years ago, it was touted, it was just touted for years. And, you know, with his presentation, it was touted to be there, like, the buildings just keep, you know, down and down and down. And with the winter coming here and the big storm, I'm sure there was more damage done to places like the Coal Hall and things like that. That's just something I, thank you guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
John Zanella. I have an issue with, uh, I guess Cedar Clog and the city of Shamoken. Five years ago, I applied for a grant from Cedar Clog, Betsy helped me fill it out. I'm part of the two on the list. And finally, as of November first, I was approved. Did I say the amount I was approved for, or no?
That's your prerogative, man.
Huh?
You wanted, let me make sure what you just said. You wanted to know if you can hold the amount that you were approved for?
Yeah.
That's your business.
Huh?
That's your business.
All right, I was approved for sixty-four thousand dollars for home improvements on the house.
Do you need that signed up, what it was going to be?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just saying, that's what it is. Now, I want to know is why, when the work is done, nobody comes to me and asks if it was done to my approval or to my liking. I never have seen one of city councils or city of Shamoken, anyone come up and say, well, work is done. They gave me a pamphlet with all the rules and regulations from Shamoken, but no one comes around. They keep saying they owe forty-eight thousand dollars, the city of Shamoken ain't paying their bill, they ain't coming back.
Stop there, that's false.
That's true.
That is absolutely.
Well, I'm just telling you what they're saying to me.
Well, I'm answering you, that's false.
I believe it.
As far as members of council coming out to the job site and so forth, they're not required, Mr. Zanella, okay? When we signed the contract with Cedar Clog, Cedar Clog has assured me that you have not been treated any different than anybody else that they have approved, sir.
But I was approving the work that is done.
You are applying through Cedar Clog, the city of Shamoken, from the very beginning, step back out of it.
Well, you have three booklets with rules and regulations from the city of Shamoken.
Because the city applied for the program, sir, and they were approved. But I, nor members of council, or anybody else working for the city of Shamoken is at liberty to do anything. They have no business.
No.
None, sir. I have confirmed in speaking with Cedar Clog, after you have visited your sitting hall once or twice and have asked my staff questions and so forth, I have called it, I have had a talk with them. I recently had a conversation with the contractor who is responsible to Cedar Clog to make sure that everything is okay. That program is running better today than it ever has. I go back to the years when it was mismanaged and the rich got richer and the poor got poorer, it's about this.
Well, I, my opinion is false.
My opinion, I have my opinion. I know as administrator.
Could I, could I possibly show you some pictures? Could I possibly show you some pictures of the work that they've done and what you would say?
I think it's, this is, we don't need to have this going on in the public meeting. I'll be glad to set up, once again, a date and time for you to come into City Hall and sit down and talk with me as the administrator. I think the members of council would appreciate that, and I would. We don't need to debate this and you, you're no different than anybody else, you got three minutes to state your piece.
Can I show you some pictures, or no?
I don't want to see your pictures now because I, it goes against the policies that I have in place. I'll be glad to sit down with you.
When? Let's make a date and a time.
If you're gonna stick around, I'll set you up with a date and time, you know, like, uh, when we're done here.
Okay.
Okay, you stick around, okay?
Yep.
I'm not going anywhere fast.
I don't know. Thank you.
I've never left you down before.
Hello, Dakota Shuck. Uh, I just wanted to, short and brief, thank you very much for the appointment to the Economic Development Authority. I hope to do right by you and this fine city. Thank you.
Okay, is there any others?
Yes.
Good night, folks. Jim Shalworth, this is Gizmo. The one complaint, I'm always walking, okay? People picking up their dog mess. It's all over town. It's everywhere. I'm tired of having my shoes out in the yard three times tonight, you know? Can we get sign made, both in English and Spanish, you know, to find, I'll tell you what, put a purchase market in between.
Lincoln Street right there.
Lincoln Street, yes, absolutely. I'm getting kind of tired.
That's Gizmo.
This is Gizmo.
I guess you, you're my buddy.
Music's better than most people. But thing is, it's every night. And it's like, I'm, I'm barking at people now, and I don't care, I'm jarted. I'll say, I'm barking, I don't care what they say, I even told one guy, pick it up, I'm watching him.
Sir.
It is bad.
I have, just a personal example, I have, I know what you're talking about. I have sent you people in the place, pick it up. And their response to me, and I don't want to say what the language was, okay? But, uh, they're not very receptive.
They aren't, they aren't, they are not. So I'm pretty strawling.
I find right out here, and I have stepped in it there once. And I've had guests come into the sitting hall, meet with me, they've stepped in it too.
It is bad, I mean, it's, people lazy.
It's terrible.
It is, and it's just like, okay, what's the, I'll leave, can't, hey, you don't punish the dog. And I can point out a couple of the homes they're at, you know, they just, can we get some sign made, just to get it across? I'm not ready to make a home.
Maybe parks and recreation, you can put that on their agenda.
Now, how to enforce it is the next thing, but I am, I mean.
We're having some success with the Shamoken Police.
Yes.
With all the cameras being down, happy small water over the city. We can tell who is doing what.
We can focus it on that, and we're coming out of, trust me. So not about. And it has proven time and time again to be successful. I tell you what, he's, he's a rock star. Uh, even glass, broken glass syringes, I mean, it is bad. I mean, I ran into two little kids last night, twelve, thirteen, their mouth was so bad, I'm like, dude, you're like, why? I'm like, I lost friends in Iraq, for you all, you know? Why were you trying to be, and you're trying to muss them, you know, like, or, you know, not bad, nuts up, just walk with, you know? Later, you see the kids breaking, I'm like, he gets glass in his paws, I'm gonna go, listen. But I'm just saying, like, proof, I mean, people are that, they're lazy, even the mayor, we talked, like, you got. Crash bags, kids are pulling them out, I see a streamer going down the street. Someone, the dog poop right there, they just throw it in the sea, they're, you know?
This past summer, and I, I walked in here and just filmed, one of the businesses sent me a picture on my, um, I think it might have been an elephant, right? Right at their front door.
It's bad, it is bad.
And it's terrible.
Well, if you guys could do something about, I mean, the housing force, you gotta catch them, but maybe some signs up here.
The signs, the signs aren't valid.
Maybe like every fifteen feet because some people can't reach, I'm gonna catch them. But I appreciate you five, happy New Year and all of that, thank you. Oh, always, always. Oh, is he ready?
Gives his hand up.
He, he's rocking.
Oh, yeah. My buddy.
I'm worried if Gizmo signed the gas.
Is there anybody else in the comments? All right, this time can I have a motion for a term?
I'll second. I'll stack up.